All right, I don't know, we can certainly start with intros. My name is Lori Clark, I'm the current Chair of the Planning Board. I guess we can go around, Nancy?
Nancy Arsenault, Planning Board Member.
And John?
John Clonar Romano, Planning Board Member.
And Karen?
And Karen Kelleher, Planning Board Member.
And I'm assuming Valerie and Michael, you know, so, okay.
Yeah.
All right, well, welcome, we're excited to have you and see where this conversation takes us.
Great, yeah, thanks so much for having me, everyone, really appreciate the opportunity to be here with you all. Lily and I have been working with Valerie and Michael for a few months now on community engagement strategy around the MBTA Communities Act. Lily and I both work in an organization called the Citizens Housing and Planning Association, which is a statewide nonprofit dedicated to encouraging housing that's affordable to people with moderate and low incomes, and fostering sustainable and responsible community development. So our whole job has really been focused on education around this law. My job title is MBTA Communities Engagement Manager. Lily is the same job, but the Senior Manager. And we have been working with communities all around the state to explain what this law means, how it can affect your community, and how you can go through this process for selecting your multifamily zoning district. So happy to be here with you all. I have a presentation prepared, should take half an hour, maybe a little longer, and then I figure we can spend some time in questions and answers. If anyone has anything they want to say or ask at the beginning before I dive into it, we can go over that now, otherwise I can get started.
And I'll just quickly say hi. And Will will be giving the presentation tonight, but I will be here if there's any questions that I need to jump in on, but he's gonna take the lead tonight.
Right.
Okay, I'll go ahead and share my screen then, dive in. Okay, here we are, talking about Stowe and how the MBTA Communities Act will affect you. I told you who CHAPA is and who I am, so I can move through that. And we can get right started and introduce what we're talking about, which is this really important law that was passed a few years ago, the MBTA Communities Act, also known as Section 3A, and I might use those interchangeably a little bit. So this was part of an economic development bond bill, passed nearly unanimously by the Legislature in 2020 with bipartisan support, signed into law by Governor Charlie Baker in 2021. And quite simply, what it does is it requires all 177 communities that either have MBTA service or annex the communities that have it to create some area where property owners will be allowed to build multifamily housing if they choose to do so. And that size depends on the size of the community and on what kind of transit surface that community has. Stowe has the most modest requirements as an adjacent small town, so it's not a huge change for Stowe, we'll go over what the requirements are, but Stowe does have to think about where it would like to see more multifamily housing in town. And it enables towns to decide where they want to put this and reduces some of the red tape that state officials have found has made it hard, really difficult, to build housing in the state and has contributed to high housing prices. So why was this passed? Very simply, leaders around the state realized that housing prices had gotten really out of control, both for homeowners and renters. And they needed to tackle this, especially because they were starting to see people, even with high and moderate incomes, leaving the state specifically because housing prices were so high. We also just have a healthy economy where we have people doing all kinds of jobs, from professional jobs to service jobs to manufacturing jobs. We need housing of all types at all price points for people in the different stages of life. And right now, we have a huge shortage of all kinds of housing, but especially apartments, places where seniors can live, maybe divorced parents, young couples getting their first apartment or condo. We really just don't have a lot of that in our state and we're trying to tackle that issue. It was also, as we were thinking about where to put more housing, it's intended to put more of the housing near transit where possible to reduce traffic and to reduce sprawl development. That's gobbling up natural land, forests, wetlands across the state. And finally, it was passed as a state law, not something regional, because this housing shortage is really a regional problem. Stowe can't solve it, Boston can't solve it, Worcester can't solve it, other small towns can't solve it. It really needs to be something we approach as a state, and so the state decided to take it on as something to get all communities on the same page about addressing this issue. And so more about why we are talking about housing so much. Very simple, housing prices have just gone absolutely crazy in Massachusetts over the past decade. Since 2016, over the last eight years, in the whole state, housing prices have gone up by 71%, the median home price. In Stowe, slightly less, good for you, 67%, but very similar to the state as a whole. Again, it's not a town-by-town issue, it's really a statewide issue and we're seeing prices rise by pretty similar rates in towns from Boston all the way out to the Berkshires. So we're all facing the same issue. And because housing prices are getting so expensive, it's becoming really unaffordable for working people. And I want to talk a little bit about what we mean by affordable, because this is not necessarily an affordable housing law, meaning it's not focused on subsidized housing, it's focused on making housing affordable for everyone and at market rate and also providing subsidized housing if needed. We're really focused on what can people afford to actually pay. And so when we talk about affordable, we consider a house affordable if a household spends no more than 30% of gross before-tax income on it, including rent utilities for renters and mortgage payments, utilities, insurance and taxes for homeowners. And the way I'll be talking about this is if you're spending more than 30% of your income on housing, we'll call you cost burdened, if you're spending more than 50%, you're severely cost burdened. And in either of these cases, if you're cost burdened, you have to cut back on things like groceries, transportation, healthcare, education, things your family really needs, or you leave the state entirely for somewhere with cheaper cost of living, which unfortunately has been happening. And I wanted to pull some data on Stowe, because I think people often may not see just how much people are struggling in their own communities, perhaps you do, but it can often be hard to see if you're not speaking to people about the struggles they're facing. So homeowners in Stowe, the majority aren't cost burdened, that's great. Generally, we see this more often with homeowners, because they've been their homes for a long time and they have bought their houses 10, 20 years ago when housing prices were much more affordable and are paying a more affordable mortgage. But even so, about 15% of homeowners in Stowe are really struggling to pay their housing costs and stay in their homes. On the flip side, we see that renters are really, really struggling. Over 50% of renters are cost burdened, are severely cost burdened. And again, these people are paying current market rates, they're not paying a mortgage from 20, 30 years ago. So that's really representing just what a struggle current housing prices are causing for people in our communities. And the big consequence of this that a lot of people are noticing is that working-age people are leaving Massachusetts. And in recent years, we've seen that Massachusetts has lost more residents than has gained. And although we've gained a few college students, every other group, we're losing people. But most significantly, we're losing people in this 25 to 44 age range. The age where people are starting their careers, really getting into their careers, building it up, starting families, buying their first home. And as they're trying to do that, they're finding that it's really hard to stay in greater Boston. The survey, a recent survey by the Greater Boston Chamber of Commerce, found that one, four young people plan to leave greater Boston in the next five years. And the top reasons they're citing are rent, job availability, and ability to buy a home. So it's really focused on housing costs that's driving young and really just kind of working-age people in the prime of their lives away from Massachusetts. And I want to bring it out a little more, because just to show like how much this problem is hurting everyone. And middle and high-income people are leaving at the highest rates. So we're seeing that low-income people are generally staying in Massachusetts more. Often, it's very hard to move when you have a low income, but people with middle incomes especially, middle-class people can't afford housing costs, they don't make a huge income, and they're leaving for places like Texas, North Carolina, Ohio, where they can find a cheaper cost of living. And same thing, people with bachelor's degrees, people that benefited from all of our great universities in our state are taking all that knowledge they got here that we invested a lot in through our public universities, through our schools, and taking our investment there and bringing to other states. They're going to contribute to those economies, which is a major issue for our economy here, where we rely on an educated workforce. And again, this has become a major concern for businesses. Small businesses have said that they, 61% of them have said that they have positions they're seeking to fill and they know that high housing costs have been a major barrier to hiring. And many are also saying that fewer customers is a major concern of theirs. So again, they need more people to be able to afford to live in their communities to succeed. And second, 70% of small business owners plan to sell or retire in the next decade. And with people in their prime working years leaving the state, it begs the question, who is going to take over? We need to create places for those future business owners to live if they're going to take over those businesses. Okay, so we know housing has gotten expensive. If you own a home and you track your home price, you know that too, probably. It's pretty clear. But the big question we're all facing is why? Why? Why has that happened? And like many things, the core answer for why something has gotten expensive is this imbalance between supply and demand. Massachusetts is a great place to live, I've lived here my whole life, I love living here. A lot of other people would like to live here too. But we just haven't been building houses at a rate to keep up with that demand. So you can see, we built a lot of housing in the 60s, 70s and 80s, but then in the 90s, that really fell off a cliff. And you'll notice especially multifamily housing fell off a cliff. And that's a big problem, because multifamily housing, apartments, townhomes, condos tend to be more affordable than single-family homes. So we kept building single-family homes, which are often more expensive, which meant more high-income people could live here, but we really stopped building this kind of mid-sized, modest, middle-class housing that working people could afford. And now, 20 years later, we're really seeing that catch up to us with these huge housing prices that are hitting us right now. But why has it gotten so hard to build housing in the state? Why did we stop? So CHAPA really acts as a convener for people in the housing space. And we've convened hundreds of conversations with leaders across every sector, developers, municipalities, realtors, advocates and more, to ask this question. And over and over, the answer people are telling us is that zoning is the problem. We have really restrictive zoning in the state that makes it hard to build homes that people need. So now I've introduced a new concept, zoning. And most of us, I think, on the planning board generally know what zoning is, but I think it's helpful still to dig into it a little bit. And zoning is something very simple. It's the rules for what you can build in your community and where you can build it. Things like shape, the height and size of buildings, the distance between buildings, what the land can be used for, is it going to be homes, is it going to be commercial, is it going to be open space? And it can include requirements for things like parking, affordability, design standards. And one really important clarification to make is that zoning does not tell anyone they have to do something with their property, and especially an overlay like we're talking about here. It simply sets the rules for what a property owner can build on their property and no one's forced to build anything. Sometimes I get this question like, oh, is this law about eminent domain? Am I going to see my land taken and built into some townhomes or a cottage court? And the reality is never, that's never going to happen. It just means that if you own your single-family home and the zoning gets updated to allow two-family homes, you can have this option to put on a second story to your home where, you know, a relative or a grandparent or maybe you could rent it out for some extra income on the side, someone like that could live. So why does this matter? Why is it so important? It seems dry, obviously. People hear zoning and they fall asleep sometimes, but really zoning is really important to determining what can be built and who especially can live, work and play in our communities. If done correctly, zoning is a great tool. We can meet our goals for housing, we can meet our goals for transportation and conservation. For me especially, this conservation piece is really important. My background before CHAPA is that I worked at Mass Audubon, which you may know as a nature conservation, land conservation organization. And what really motivated me to get into this field is that we've seen all this sprawl development across Massachusetts, which has been gobbling up our natural lands. And obviously, people need a place to live, but when we build in this really sprawling way with large lot sizes, mandatory single-family housing, we destroy our forests and wetlands. And so I'm motivated to find a way that we can balance both the home that people need and protecting our open spaces. And the way our zoning is in most of Massachusetts right now, and especially greater Boston, has been really counterproductive to both that conservation goal and also creating affordable homes. So 80% of the land in Boston right now is zoned exclusively for single-family homes, meaning you can't build anything else. And often, we're talking about very large lot sizes that lead to a lot of loss of natural lands. In Stowe, I checked with Michael as well, that's the case as well. By right, you can build a single-family home, any residential lot, but if you want to do anything else, you need a special permit. And that can be a really complicated, expensive process for developers that often discourages them from building anything else. And what that does is that it pushes out people who can't afford a single-family home, as well as people who just want to live in multifamily housing, people that are retirees looking to downsize, or young couples looking for their first condo, or just anyone who needs a smaller, lower maintenance space and doesn't want the expense and headache of dealing with a large home. And I've covered the effect on natural lands as well. So again, the MBTA Communities Act is fundamentally about zoning reform. It's about changing the rules for what people can build on their property and giving property owners more options for what they can build on their land. And where you all come in it is it allows towns to decide where the most appropriate places are for that kind of multifamily housing. Again, doesn't force anyone to build anything, just gives property owners more options. And say, if you own a single-family home and your home is rezoned up to eight units, you can do nothing, or you can build two units, you can build three, four, five, six, seven, or all the way up to eight if you choose, but again, the opportunity is up to you. So it's really about choosing where we want to see new development and then giving property owners the option to pursue that development if they choose to do so. So what are the goals of the way this law was written? Covered this a bit already, we're really focused on reducing high home prices. Zoning is a huge barrier to building more housing. A single-family zoning didn't immediately cause prices to rise, because for a while, we could sprawl out, we could just keep building further and further away from the city. But we've kind of reached the limit of that now. And now it's becoming very expensive to buy a single-family home from this very limited supply that we've created. Again, it's not, we're not saying that new homes are going to be much less expensive than old ones, probably not, much like cars. If you have an old car, it's going to be cheaper than a new car. But you can imagine if you stopped adding any new cars, the prices of old cars would go way up. And that's kind of the situation we're in here. We need to introduce some new cars into the market to make our old rundown houses more affordable. And finally, this is really targeting types of homes that tend to be more affordable. So smaller multifamily homes are more likely to be affordably priced for middle-class families. Single-family homes are, they've reached about, I think, $700,000 median, $700,000 the median sale price in Massachusetts right now, or greater Boston, which is just completely out of reach for so many people. So we're trying to create options that are more affordable. Second, I've covered this a bit, we're trying to reduce sprawl. What we've seen in the last few decades is that the highest rates of development are happening, out past 495, really reaching into these areas that had been historically undeveloped. They'd been farmland, they'd been forests, they'd been wetlands. And now, because we're not allowing anything to be built within the 495 belt, people are building out there and taking over our natural resources. So this law is intending to concentrate development in the places where it's already happened to minimize impacts on our natural lands. Additionally, it's trying to put development near transit at least, because transportation is the greatest source of CO2 emissions in our state. So if we can get people to drive less at all, that is a victory. And obviously, in a place like Stowe, you don't have transit in town, people are always going to be driving, but if we can convince people to drive just a little bit less, that is a victory for the climate. And finally, economic development. I mentioned in the beginning, this was included not in a housing bill, but in a economic development bill. And as I mentioned earlier, Massachusetts has been losing population and it's really key for businesses to have workers be able to afford to live in the state and customers be able to afford to live here too. I do see a hand in the crowd. I can take that now, I'm just going to check how I'm doing on time. Yeah, I can, Stowe resident, do you want to ask a question quickly?
Are we going to be taking questions from the public at this time?
Lori, how do you handle?
I think, because I haven't heard from them yet, I think maybe I'll just run through the presentation, then we can do questions at the end.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, excellent. Okay, so yeah, moving on again, economic development is a major goal of this bill. We need people to be able to afford to live in this state, especially people that are in their 20s and 30s and buying homes now with expensive educations that we as a state have paid for. We want them to then turn around and contribute to our economy and not leave and take their talents and education to Texas or Florida or Ohio or elsewhere, where housing costs are cheaper. So what kind of housing are we talking about here? I've talked a lot about multifamily housing. And we haven't really defined what that means. So the kind of multifamily housing this law is really targeting is called missing-middle housing. And the reason it's called missing-middle is because, one, we don't have a lot of it, it's missing. We have a lot of single-family homes in Massachusetts and we have a lot of these larger mid-rise apartment buildings that you might see in more urban areas. But we don't have is everything in between. We have very few duplexes, we have very few triple-deckers. We built a lot historically, it's a very traditional New England architecture type, but we've essentially outlawed them with single-family zoning, so we don't build them anymore. Cottage courts, townhouses, you can think of like Brooklyn Brownstones, basically illegal to build in Massachusetts right now. Triplexes, anything that is between single-family home and a large apartment building. The other reason this is called middle housing is because it tends to be affordable for people in the middle class. We have some cheaper, large apartment buildings, we have very expensive single-family homes, but we're not building this kind of modest, mid-sized housing that working, middle-class people tend to be able to afford. So the law is really kind of pinpointing that kind of housing. And you might have seen the requirement is 15 units per acre, that's kind of like a rough a rough guideline for what will get you to this kind of sized housing that is often more affordable. So what does it actually look like in progress? I pulled two examples I could find just quickly of projects of this density in your community. So one, I found 15 Hastings Street in Stowe, it's a three-family house. I'm really amazed they managed to fit three apartments into this building, because you can't see all three doors, but they are there. There's a website where you can see the density of any parcel in Massachusetts. And that's 15 units per acre, so that's really exactly the density this law is shooting for on a very small lot. On the other side, you have this project in nearby Boxborough, where they have a larger lot, 2.2 acres, and they have 41 of these kind of like small attached townhomes that are on that property. And that's 18 units per acre, so it's a little denser than what you need to target, but it creates a similar kind of density. So again, like some people are thinking about this law, they're thinking about, oh, there's going to be this huge apartment building going in this community. And you can allow that, I mean, it's still in your power, but this law is really targeting the creation of these smaller, more compact, missing-middle housing types. So why multifamily housing? More access, greater affordability for all kinds of people at all stages of life. A really big thing we think about here is the advantages this presents for older adults, people who are downsizing. They may not want to live in their big, expensive, hard-to-maintain, single-family home anymore, but they want to stay in the same community where they've raised their children, lived their whole life. But in so many suburbs in Massachusetts, those options are not available. There might be a couple condos somewhere, but if those are all occupied right now, you can't downsize and you either have to stay in your house that is hard to live in or totally move out of the area, which can be really devastating to someone that's lived in this community their whole life. Young couples can become homeowners. Again, single-family homes right now are so expensive. Getting on that pipeline to homeownership is so important. So being able to rent just a condo in the community you want to live, you can get your kids in the school. And then as you continue progressing your career, eventually buy the larger, single-family home that you want to live in and maintain that continuity for your family. Businesses can find employees that live nearby, that's huge. People are traveling really far to work in expensive suburbs. College graduates can return home and don't have to move back in with their parents. I mean, many people, you know, have kids that move out and then find they can't afford anywhere nearby to live and they have to move to a totally different state, which is really hard for families. And another important one to highlight is just like our public servants, teachers, firefighters, police officers, right now, can't afford to live in many of our communities. This kind of housing is really targeted towards them. And so we're trying to create options for those people. Okay, I'm going to check where I'm at on time, because I may be going on kind of long. Michael, could I get a time check from you?
We're at 7:25, so you're about 25 minutes in. So if you want to talk for maybe another 10, 15, that works for us.
Okay, okay, I'll keep going. So now I'm going to address some common concerns people have about new housing and how it can affect people's communities. And the first question I often get is how is this going to affect school enrollment? Building a lot of housing will presumably bring some more children. Could that lead to any kind of overcrowding issues? And the answer is really no, it's not something we're worried about at all in most of Massachusetts. We're seeing declining enrollment across the state right now in almost every community. You can find that data for Stowe on a website called Datatown. What we've seen is that enrollment peaked in about 2015, has been pretty rapidly declining since then. And so overcrowding is not something we're worried about. That said, recent studies have found that there's actually very little relationship between new housing development and school enrollment. And that's because these more modest multifamily buildings tend to appeal more to young couples, older adults and smaller families that are quite as likely to have children. What really drives school enrollment is turnover in existing single-family homes, which maybe could happen eventually, but there's certainly not going to be this large rush of children all at once that are going to over-grad the schools. But hopefully, over time, maybe if Stowe really commits to this, this could be a way to maybe decline that school enrollment and keep schools on a sustainable footing. Another question I get all the time is how would this impact a town's sewer and water responsibilities? And the key thing to know here is that municipalities are under no obligation to provide sewer and water to new development. I know that Stowe, for the most part, Michael, I remember, doesn't have public sewer and water. It's mostly septic. So multifamily developers in that context, they are on the hook for providing their own septic systems. And it's not something you have to worry about, this huge expense for the town in providing the infrastructure. Developers are responsible for that themselves. And developments of less than 90 bedrooms can have that onsite septic system that they would pay for themselves. The density is up to 20 units per acre, so around the kind of density that Stowe could create. No need to worry about these huge expenses for Stowe, developers are responsible for that. How could this impact property taxes? This is a big question, I get a lot. And there's some really excellent research that the Massachusetts Taxpayers Foundation has done on this. And it showed that new housing has a neutral or positive effect on municipal finance. And I'm going to dig into this a bit, because I think it's really good research. And the Massachusetts Taxpayers Foundation just does a lot of great work. They're a nonpartisan think tank that seeks to analyze how all kinds of different policy changes will affect the taxes that Massachusetts residents pay. So I want to give a little background on this study. The group, the Massachusetts Taxpayers Foundation, they identified 57 communities. And they put half with the largest growth into one community and half with the smallest growth into the other category. And then they compared how a lot of different metrics change over time, like tax levy, home value, taxes as a percentage of income and revenue sources. So what we found is that first, communities with more growth saw home values increase. So if you're worried about how this would affect your home value seeing new development, it seems from this data that growth tends to have a generally positive impact on the value of homes in that community. So we're seeing home values go up, but the question is, is that going to make people's property taxes go up? And what we've seen again is that between 2007 and 2022, in both communities with a lot of growth, top 28, and very little growth, the bottom 29, there was only a very modest increase in property taxes, the percentage of income, and growth did not really have an impact on that. So if you see a lot of growth, if you don't see that much growth, you can't expect property taxes to change based on growth very much. Now, where you see the bigger difference is in total tax levy. Um, towns that saw more growth were collecting more taxes. Um, at no additional cost to existing taxpayers. Um, and so what that means is that um. When you see more growth, you have more money coming in for all sorts of things like schools and services and fire and police and. Um, all the things that keep a community running uh without existing taxpayers having to foot the bill or having to to. Put forward initial uh additional funds that they hadn't been before. Um, and again, you're seeing in terms of the total local receipts from um all, all tax revenue. Communities with more growth are doing better than communities without growth by a pretty significant margin. So to summarize that whole section, what we're seeing is that um. Communities with development, they aren't seeing property taxes rise that much. Um, no more than communities without development, but they are seeing more revenue come in that allows them to pay for improved services. Okay, so I've addressed some common concerns. Now I just want to give like a quick update of where we're at with this law. Stowe is in the last, the final category for complying with this law. Already a hundred and sixteen communities have passed zoning plans to comply with the law. Uh, and a lot of the communities around Stowe have already done so. So Harvard, Littleton, Acton, Ayr, Maynard, Concord, Sudbury. Have all already done this, um successfully got it passed a plan through their town meetings. Um, and thirty-six communities have been, have received final approval, approval from the state. Communities that have submitted plans um have all been approved so far. So there's not a lot of fear about like. If your planner is engaged in this, as I know Michael and Valerie are doing a great job with, um, the state will almost certainly. Approve that plan and and allow that um. We'll, we'll be sure that your community complies. And so we've seen about an eighty-one percent pass rate this year. Uh, and we're expecting that number will only, will only grow in the months to come. One development recently people have been talking a lot about is this court case of the Attorney General versus Milton. Um, and a little background on that is that Milton missed their deadline for complying, so the Attorney General sued them for um non-compliance. Um, and the decision about that case came out next week and it um had two main effects. Um, the first is that they made it clear that the Attorney General has the right to enforce the law. Um, so it's not an optional law. It is the state law and every town does have to comply with it. Um, but they did say that the Executive Office of Housing in Livable Communities has to re-release the guidelines as regulations. Um, which is really more of a procedural change than anything, and I can chat more about that if people have questions, because. At the end of the day, it's just not that relevant for most communities, especially adjacent small towns like Stowe. Although the initial guidelines have to be kind of re-released through a public process. Emergency regulations are already in effect, that are already enforceable. Um, those regulations are pretty much indistinguishable from the previously existing guidelines. Uh, and the deadline for Stowe remains the same uh at the end of this year. Um, so we're not lucky to see any, any real change for adjacent small towns from this lawsuit. Except that this just clarifies that this is state law. It's not optional and all communities do have to go through this process of coming up with a plan. So finally, I know Michael's probably gone over this with you and Valerie as well. Um, what are the requirements for Stowe? But because Stowe is in adjacent small town, it's a pretty modest ask of a town. Um, there's no minimum land area. There's no location requirements beside from the fact that you can't put it on excluded lands, like publicly owned lands, rivers, wetlands. Open space, um, private roads, hospitals, prisons, schools, et cetera. But otherwise, you have a lot of choice on where you want to put this in town. And there's a formula that calculates what the minimum theoretical capacity could be. Um, and and Mike can talk more about that, I'm sure. Um. And you also have options like putting in some affordability requirements. You can go ten percent if you want, require ten percent of new units to be. Um, deed restricted as affordable housing. Um, and you can do an economic feasibility analysis, go higher if you'd like. Um, there's an option to have mandatory mixed use if you want to see businesses in some of these areas. Um, and in all cases, kind of the regular guidelines around development remain. You still maintain the right to site plan review, your historic preservation bylaws remain in effect. Um, it's really this opportunity to choose where would we like to see. Multifamily housing that'll be modest, more affordable to people in our town. We can choose where we like to see it. And it can be a really inclusive community process. So that is my summary of the law. Um. I'm happy to take questions now. I really appreciate the opportunity to be here with you. Um, and if there's something you feel like I didn't cover, I can, I can talk about that too. Lily and I have done this work in a lot of communities, so we, we know a lot of. Various tangential things about this law. So again, thanks a lot. And um, if folks wanna raise their hands, I'm happy to ask question, answer question.
I guess, um, I'd like to first focus on the planning board, um, because tonight is really about a discussion. For the planning board to get educated and talk about um how we plan to move forward. I, I have an, one initial question. Your last slide indicated there's no minimum for the district. Which. I had a different understanding, so I wanted to ask about that.
Yeah, absolutely. So there's no minimum land area for the district. Um, other towns, there has, there's like a fifty acre minimum. Um, what Stowe has is like a minimum unit capacity, meaning. Under the new zoning, um, you have to allow, I don't know the number, and Stowe, it's some, somewhere around a hundred, I think.
Okay.
Hundred and thirty-nine.
We work backwards then. We calculate the units and then work backwards to get that land area.
Right. So, so we use the unit capacity to say, okay, if we have to allow at least a hundred and thirty-nine units. That's gonna be about, um, you know, nine and a half acres. Um, just to get a, some idea going into the um, the state's compliance model.
The other question I had on that slide is, um, you mentioned that we can uh write into. Our bylaw or zoning bylaw that we can include, we can have inclusionary zoning and. Can that be more than ten percent?
Yes, it can be, but if you go beyond ten percent, you need to conduct an economic feasibility analysis. To prove that it would still be viable for a developer to build that, because um. When you have higher affordability requirements, it's cutting into the profit. Um, or it's adding costs for the developer and it might not pencil out for them depending on the, the market conditions.
Okay. All right, so um, I will open it up to uh other planning board members right now to see if you have any questions.
I'll just add very quickly that you, there is grant money available if you wanted to conduct an economic feasibility analysis. Um, and didn't have the capacity to do it in-house. Um, the Massachusetts Housing Partnership. Has given folks grants to be able to do that. I would say we're like looking at roughly like a ten thousand dollar budget. Ish for that. Um, it depends. Maybe in a smaller community, it might be a little bit smaller, but the community is doing that last year. That was about what they were being quoted. Fifteen.
So do you see any communities from, um. That have the ten percent or greater for affordable housing in the bylaws you do?
Many. I, I, I don't have the exact number off the top of my head, but I can say multiple dozens, a couple dozen.
And um, I guess. I'm sure ten percent is the most common, but are there other examples of communities? That have um done the economic study or have one in progress so that they can do more than ten?
Yeah, again, I think many. I know Concord has definitely done fifteen or twenty percent. Twenty percent is the maximum that you can require. Um, but I know there are at least several other communities that have done so as well.
When we start to take a look at bylaw language, we can um maybe pull some examples from other towns and. And show that as well. Sorry to interrupt you, Lily.
No, I was just gonna say, we have a spreadsheet somewhere of all the ones that we're aware of so far. Um, yeah, what percentage of units and then at what area median income? Um, is it eighty? Is it sixty to eighty? Is it? Below sixty? Um, that's pretty rare, but we have that information and we'll, we'll get it to you.
Great. I guess one add-on question to that is, is it possible to do? I don't know what the right term is, but more middle income requirements. So. Um, in some of our bylaws, we have both an inclusionary zoning for true subsidized, but we also have. Um, additional requirements um for not necessarily subsidized, but um. Middle income housing.
Yeah, I mean, technically, depending on your community, oftentimes eighty percent AMI kind of is middle income housing. Um, but I have certainly in some communities, they've even gone up to a hundred and twenty percent of AMI. Those tend to be really, really high-cost communities. Where even someone making a really solid salary is still struggling to find housing. So. That high of a level of an AMI tends to be more in like hyper-high demand, you know, the. Cambridges and Somerville's and, and Boston's of the world. Um, in our like more suburban and more rural communities. That I've, I'm not familiar with programs that go quite up, up to that level. It's just usually not necessary to be able to. Get people housing.
Um, other planning board member questions?
What about other communities doing mixed use?
Honestly, that has been more rare. Um, partly because the requirements for the mixed-use portion. Are different in some ways than the requirements for the housing portion. And it's not impossible, but it just, it makes it a little bit more of a puzzle. And so in places like Beverly, for example, who their whole little downtown area around the. Commuter station is like a walkable downtown mixed-use environment already. And they used their three A district as an opportunity to like expand that a little bit. So for them, it made total sense to do that because it's sort of a continuation of what already exists. In places where you're kind of starting from scratch a little bit, maybe trying to create or revitalize a village center. Um, I haven't seen as many smaller-scale communities doing that. Mostly, I've seen them. Kind of try to tackle it separately and have like a commercial business district and then a multifamily district. And put them next to each other so that you're ideally trying to provide customers to those businesses by putting multifamily housing right next door. But not necessarily zoning them into the same building. Um, I'm not saying that's a bad idea. It's just, I would say I'm not seeing people. Do it as often outside of more kind of urban areas. Doesn't mean you shouldn't start. It just don't have as many examples.
All right, John?
Yeah, I mean, we, Valerie mentioned earlier that uh, I think we need about somewhere just under ten acres. And uh. You know, I wonder, I think there was some requirement about that you have to have at least five acres. Uh, and I wonder if, if are other towns trying to split things up or trying to just do one big one because. I mean, I'd like to see kind of more pockets of, of denser housing. That, because we don't have any place that would really make it appropriate for commuters, right? There really isn't place for that, right? But we have some, some more neighborhoods that it might be nice to try to uh put some more denser housing in those areas, but. We only have ten acres and it has to be at least five. We don't get the opportunity to do much. So is there any wiggle room there?
I mean, the, the wiggle room, I suppose, is to go above ten acres and maybe have.
Yeah, I guess.
Multiple, you know, you could have, if you wanted to go up to fifteen acres, you could have three different districts. Um, but that five-acre contiguity case um is. As far as I'm aware, immovable, partly because I think they're trying to avoid people doing spot zoning where they're like this parcel and that parcel. And that parcel and not creating a neighborhood. They really want people to not just have a random. Multifamily homes like flung across, but to try to, to create a neighborhood that feels like a little cohesive and, and. Makes sense in terms of its relationship to the, the broader community. But certainly, I mean, there's no, theoretically, you could put as many districts in as many places as you want, as long as they're all. Five acres, you can have that.
All right. Any other questions from the planning board? Go ahead, Valerie.
Might just add one. Um, I, so I think the board has talked a little bit about wanting to um. To have kind of buffers um or some open space, if possible, associated with. Multifamily housing development. I just wanted, if you wondered if you could speak to that a little bit. Um, and just if, if you're seeing that in any other zoning that's been approved by the state. Um, or if really we should be just looking at what is, um, you know, what is allowed for single-family home development by right, right now? What's our, how, how flexible can we get?
I'm so sorry. I'm gonna confess that I wasn't paying attention because I just got a text that my sister's going into labor. Um, I blacked out. Um, so hopefully Will was listening because I. Drew my attention away.
Totally understandable.
It was a bright notification. Um, so Will, hopefully you can answer.
Congratulations to your sister first.
Yes.
Very, very exciting. Um, I did, I did hear the question. The, the question is if um. Other communities have found ways to incorporate any kind of open space requirements around new multifamily housing um under the M K Communities Act. Or if we simply have to think about applying kind of the same standards that we apply to single-family housing, to multifamily housing.
It is a general principle of three A, I would say, that you can't hold your three A district. To meaningfully different standards than you hold any other part of town to. For example, um, one of the things they explicitly state are. Uh, energy efficiency requirements. So you wouldn't be able to say. You know, any housing in this district has to have a higher standard of energy efficiency, but not hold development. Not hold new development in other parts of town to that same standard. So if it was sort of a across-the-board, henceforth. All-new development must, you know, have this kind of open space requirement or this kind of energy efficiency requirement. Then three A can be covered by that as well. Um, but it's really just like. Anytime you're sort of starting to discriminate or make things a little bit more difficult in that community. Um, and then that's when we're, we're starting to, to break away from what would be considered legal.
I think it's, it's um important to consider too that um. A three A district where you have indoor housing allows you to maybe meet your goals for adding new homes to your community while conserving more open space in other parts of town. Um, if you do all the large single-family homes and large lots, you use a lot of land, some of that might be open space. Um, if you're putting more homes on this smaller five-ten acre parcel, you can then conserve space elsewhere while creating the same number of homes.
Yes, yeah, absolutely. And certainly, I mean. Including open space provisions, I think, are, is always great, as long as we're just applying them equitably.
Yeah, but then how, how do you calculate the uh, the housing density? Do you include the open space in that or not? Because if you lose the density because of the open space thing, then you, you're gonna have trouble meeting the requirements.
Right, yeah, no, it would still, I mean, part of that ultimately comes down to a few factors. One, there's just like. How you, this design of the building, like the scale and mass of the building. Um, if you have, let's say, a one acre lot and you need to fit fifteen units onto that acre. There's a lot of different ways those could be arranged that might, you know, if you're willing to go a little bit higher, then you don't have to go as wide. Um, and you can kind of. Play around with that to encourage more open space on the lot. Um. So that's one way to kind of navigate, like trying to maintain open space while also maintaining the density. Something that um also can be done sometimes, and this depends for like a super-small-scale development, like five or six units. I, I don't think you would necessarily be able to get something like this, but when it comes to slightly larger scale, you might be able to even negotiate with the. Um, developer to set aside, you know, can, will you build a, a park as part of this? Building that the rest of the community can use or um would you, there's, maybe there's some. Kind of underutilized space next door. Would you spruce this up? Um, sometimes people have been able to. Get developers to make some improvements to green space as kind of a, a trade-off for maybe having a, a higher. Density or more affordability or something else that they want to do.
Right. And you said we can do cycling approvals, so that's an opportunity to have the developer at the table.
Yeah.
All right, um, Valerie, I guess I'm gonna ask you, are there other specific topics that you are hoping to cover? Between the two groups tonight?
I think really just if there are any other questions that board members have about um the law or about. Making the argument in Stowe or um, you know. Any anything lingering um that you have right now, because Lily and Will have been doing this for. Quite some time now, so they're definitely um experts, so.
I do have a question about engagement.
I mean, you've clearly now probably experienced with many towns that already have passed. And I guess one question for you is what do you think was the key? To um. Passing um and and really acceptance. So I guess I'll I'll stop there and see where you go with it.
Well, I I mean, this is what I could talk about all day. But I'll pick a few top things. Um, and luckily, this is. A conversation that Valerie and Michael and Will and I are 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 having all the time, um, so it doesn't have to end here. Um, but a few things that I think are really important. Focusing on public education, not assuming that people understand. What zoning is or what this law is or. Why why it works, why it was, would it be proposed in the beginning? Um, and really focusing on what are we moving? Towards as a community. What do we want to see in the future? Because these changes very quickly get bogged down. In these conversations get bogged down in like a fear of change and it becomes this like debate negotiation of like. How can we get away with doing as little as possible without getting in trouble for it? And. Ultimately, I mean, in addition to not only. Not really addressing the housing issue when we do that, we don't necessarily come up with good. Proactive plans that are gonna produce what we want if we're only focusing on avoiding what we don't want. And so I'm continually encouraging people to like. Look back at any recent. Kind of community engagement you've done over the last few years, whether it's a master plan or a housing production plan or just a survey or. How other town meetings have gone. Um, really, any kind of big, major. Conversations that have happened in the town in the last few years. And being aware of the kind of the context, I guess, that people are are coming into the the conversation with. So yeah, I really just repeating that education over and over and over again. Um, even when you think people don't need it, they they often do, and they need to hear it multiple times because. You know, people don't necessarily, if you've never really thought about zoning, hearing it one single time is is not, you're not gonna just like understand it forever. Meeting people where they are, so bringing the engagement to them wherever possible. My question is just like, where do people already go in town and how can you bring this information to them there? So that might be. Posting up at the everybody's favorite, you know. Coffee or pizza shop or whatever it is where you often see people in town um on a on a Saturday and maybe having some. Pamphlets or some information or hey, we're having a meeting next week. Here's. You know, don't forget, take this with you so you don't forget about it. Little league games, farmers markets, um, community kind of days, some, a lot of. Places have like Town Day or some sort of community fair or festival. Churches, like faith groups. In Essex, we had um. People at our coalition there had a lot of success going to the transfer station, um, because they don't have trash pickup in their town. And so. Everyone has to go to the transfer station at some point and they made a habit over a series of. I think like multiple Saturdays in a row. They went to the transfer station on a Saturday morning and they had donuts and coffee and as people came, they were just like, hey, have you. Heard about this law? Do you have any questions about it? Do you know how you're gonna vote on it? And that was how they they got it passed in Essex. They actually did it like they were one of the first small towns to do it. Um, which you wouldn't have necessarily assumed because a lot of their neighbors up in the North Shore um were kicking and screaming and Essex just got straight to it. So yes, in in review. Don't underestimate how much reminding people need about what this even is because it can get really technical and wonky real fast. To avoid that wonkiness, focusing on, okay, what do we want? What have we already said in past planning processes that? That we want and how can we use this law as an opportunity to get that? Maybe we've said we want to encourage more commercial activity for more of that to strengthen that tax base and, you know, further economic development. How can we use this to strengthen that? We're concerned about conservation. How can we use this to address that? Um, and then meeting people where they are. Those are like the three. Things, I would say.
And I think the initial reactions thus far, people. Are afraid of changing the. Small-town feel um and the character. Of the town. And so I'm wondering if you can think of examples where that. Same fear existed and and how they um addressed it.
I'll I'll start, but Will, I don't want, I'm I'm talking a lot. It first of all, it comes, I've never been in any community where it didn't come up. Ever. So um it comes up everywhere. And it's natural because people are afraid of change. It's just like how our brains work. Um, and we usually don't make decisions using our brains very much. It's mostly from our our hearts and and guts is how we make a lot of these decisions. Um, so a few things. One, I think providing those images like Will did. Of the kind of housing we're actually talking about can assuage a lot of fears because it's not like. Some people hear fifteen units per acre and they think skyscraper. People I don't think have like a mental vision of like what an acre an acre actually is. Um, so reminding people like this is what we're actually talking about. Like, it can be. Three, four family homes that might even from the outside not even look like a multifamily home. Um, it doesn't inherently have to mean some like. Extreme change from what we're used to. And then also the, you know, I don't always say this, but. The truth is that change is unavoidable. Um, still will change, whether. You pass three A or not, whether you make any changes to your zoning. I mean, everyone in town could set down their pens. Walk out of town hall and never make another change to planning or policy. All the boards could shudder and the town will change. There's no way to avoid it because we all age and die and the world goes on and things change. So we can't prevent that, but we can manage it and we can. Be thoughtful in the future that we're trying to create and work backwards from there to sow the seeds for that success now. Um, so. You know, I don't jump to that part, but it is ultimately true that um. We will never, we will never avoid change. So rather than running from it, let's turn around, face it and and work with it.
Does anybody else from the planning board have an additional question? Go ahead, Nancy.
Um, just to add on to that, I liked how the slides addressed. The perceptions that are incorrect, like the school enrollment and I've he's seen and heard a lot of all that, you know, there's several things. I like bringing that information out there so it's not a defensive response from us. And it will also prevent people from like lining up and and going on and on about something that's not relevant or true. So I I really thought that was clearly done. I think the graphics were really good, the um. Different illustrations that backed up what you were saying appeals to a lot of people who. Don't listen to a word, you know. I yeah, I thought the presentation was really good. Did you guys present at any town meetings? I was curious. Where they were doing voting?
We have not ourselves presented the town meeting. Um, we have worked closely with planners to prepare the presentation that they give, which is something we're more than happy to do. In Stowe, um, and we've also worked with planning board members or, you know, in places where that have city councils, we've worked with them. Um, to help, you know, just make sure that they're telling the story kind of clearly and and coherently. Because we've done this so many times, we've sort of learned like what does and doesn't land with people. Um, we typically, people need to be sponsored to speak at town meeting if. President. And yeah, and we also want to avoid the appearance of like uh an an outside.
Right, right. Also liked the non-emotional um not feel good about things. Put points in there. It was factual and it's about. How we're going to grow and it isn't about being do-gooders or whatever, which I think. Some people are really against that whole track, you know, so I thought that was good.
Okay, thank you.
I I like the idea of having some examples that show. Benefits really are even to a homeowner like. This means you can keep your house as it is, you can. You can add on a couple of units and take the fear of that number of fifteen units. Away. Because people just shudder when they think of fifteen units on one acre.
Yeah, it's a great point. And as I'm talking about this with communities, I try to avoid discussion of that fifteen units, well. I can talk about fifteen units per acre and contextualize it, but I really try to avoid discussion of like what that unit capacity minimum is. It's often that has very little relation to what actually will ever get built, right? Like, Stowe might have a hundred. Minimum unit capacity, but depending on where it puts that, it could get a hundred in. You know, in five years, or it could get nothing at all if all that unit capacity gets spread on. Properties that no one ever intends to sell. So really like a zoning change. The the this like maximum capacity just isn't really relevant number for what the actual impact of the zoning change will be. So really, I really just want to talk about like, what are we trying to create? What's the future we want? Do we want more customers for businesses? Do we want? More affordable units? Do we want smaller properties? Those are the things we can create. We can't really predict exactly how many of the things will get built in the next ten years.
Referring to the middle market uses, that that um hadn't stuck with me so much before. And I think that is a point that might appeal to people in Stowe who have children who want to stay or grandparents or whatever. And that they're not just thinking about it as low-income only, and so they might be able to relate. A little more with emphasis on that middle point. So just an idea.
And and I don't think this is about low income. It's about creating housing, so. Bringing the cost, the overall cost of housing in the state down.
Right, but I think the immediate perception is low income.
Exactly, but that those are the points we need to get across.
I also think pulling together examples of multifamily housing that. From a design standpoint, fits into the town. Nothing against Boxborough, but I certainly wouldn't use that. But I do think, um, you know, it pictures. I think really help. People visualize what we're talking about versus. The words. Only lead to people imagining things that. May never come to fruition.
Yeah, it was. Michael came up with some really interesting pictures for us when we were going through. Our own little working session and.
Yeah, that same one of all the structures. That was good.
No, 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 there was one where on in a working meeting, very familiar homes. That qualify.
That would scare somebody if they see their house.
Yeah, oh, and I was a little rushed in selecting my examples today, but um, yeah, there there are really beautiful examples of like. Two, three, four family homes. It was in some areas you have these homes that they kind of look like mansions. And then they are these like condo complexes that might have like four apartments in them. So we can definitely find more of those. And if if you all want some more of those to use in your presentations. I can certainly find some Valerie can reach out to us. Um, also, there's a website, L Point U two, which I think is really interesting. It's called Residency, which shows. The parcel density of every residential parcel in Massachusetts. So you can click on. You you can look look at a town that has a lot of fifteen units per acre lots and then you can. Spend a little time on Google Street View and look at what those lots look like. And I mean, for example, my street um. Has a whole bunch of really beautiful, like two-family homes. On it, um, kind of like stacked, one one apartment on the bottom floor, two on the upper floor. Uh, and there's really beautiful Victorian houses that I think like it'd be really hard for anyone to object to on any kind of like aesthetic grounds.
But we have to be careful about not setting false expectations because we don't have. A lot of say in what. Because it's it's by right.
Which which does lead me to another question because while I know we can't put design standards on this district. That doesn't mean that we can't have design standards um in town across the board. Um, and I'm curious in your travels. Um, if you've seen any. Towns that have that already and were able to apply it to the three A district as well.
I'm sure we have. Honestly, nothing is. I mean, yeah, I don't I don't have any specific examples. I can I can think more about it. I mean, certainly. Through the site plan review process, there is, you know. A potential for design review in there as well. I think where it becomes really tricky is like. I don't think it's crystal clear. Honestly, not just in three A, but in general. When design guidelines like go too far.
Understood.
Because there's like, there's simple things of like, we, you know, we. Have a preference for these kinds of materials or this kind of. And then you could really be like. Gold leaf trim windows. I think it is very subjective to some degree. What what's an appropriate level of. Guidelines on on the design, but.
I think what's most important is whatever you're applying to a single-family home development, if you apply that also to the three A district. There's a good chance that'll be considered reasonable, but you can't go above and beyond what you're already requiring.
Alright, any other discussion topics from the planning board or Valerie? Alright, Valerie, did you have anything else planned?
No, no, this was it for the night.
So this, I know this was not intended to be um a public forum at all. Um, and so, uh, but I also know the Stowe resident has had their hand up. And if you do have a question related to getting educated around three A. I am willing to open it up to that, but uh just to note to the public. Um, you know, this was not necessarily the forum um for public input or we will be holding public forums. So I guess I, um, if you wanna unmute. The Stowe resident, we can see what type of question they have.
I have a question on.
I just want to clarify, this is not. This does not.
Apply to any requirements.
That the town has for forty B, correct? It's high density. And yet it does not have any. Having a problem with that word. Okay, and I I do just want to say with regard to taxes. With regard to cost in Stowe. It's related, Laurie. If we're talking about the cost of housing in Stowe. I am not a Stowe homeowner. And although I could buy a home in Stowe, the taxes are prohibitive. And part of that is the assessments, so. That is huge, and I would argue that there is a lot of affordable housing in Stowe, smaller homes. But our seniors can't afford them because of those prohibitive taxes because we never say no to costs. That's it.
Understood. Alright, uh, any other final questions or comments from the planning board? Alright, well, thank you so much, Lily and Will.
Very helpful. Thank you.
Lily, thanks for having us.
Yeah, it was great to be here with you all. And again, we remain a resource that's available, so. Um, if you have more questions for us, Valerie can ask us anytime. We talk to her and Michael. Very regularly, so just let us know and we are always here to help.
Alright, sounds great. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you all.
Thank you all.